One topic this evening, and that's to discuss the procedure for selecting a council person for Terry Breyer's vacancy. To start with, I have the que-- I know you have these all on your email, but these are questions that we asked. Yeah, these are questions that we asked the last time we had a vacancy. And I mentioned, as I mentioned last Monday night, if anybody had any, council people had any questions that they wanted answered or would like to ask, that they get them to Julia, and none of us have given her any questions. So therefore, I think this is the best basis to start with. Talking about the questions is kind of getting the cart before the horse, in my opinion. We have 18 candidates. Every council person got all the resumes and everything by email today, and they could have come in, so they didn't need to come in and get them a hard copy. But now every council people, person has everything that's been submitted in hard copy. So, and I guess we got the press in the back, and if you want to get a copy of these, you're definitely, maybe, Julia, can you get Brian the copy of?
The packet.
Of the packet? Because Larry, this is a public document and all open. Everything we do on this whole selection is, is open, and there will be no discussions in, in any other meeting or any other forum, whatever. So everything you, happens and any decisions is going to be with us sitting here. I want to be sure everybody's aware of that. And I want to just start out having gone through two of these selections before, a little bit of a, the history, what we used to do. And in those cases, we only had one, I think we had six people, and the other one, there was eight or nine. And we had, when we got to interviews, we had everybody in front of us, and they were asked the same question, and went down, passed the mic, back and forth. It was a very awkward procedure, and I thought it was kind of an unfair procedure because the first person, by the time you hear, you get to the 18th person, they've had a lot of time to, to think of what the answer is. And if it's a smaller number, you know, you can equal it out by starting at various points. So that's just my personal observation of what we've done in the past. So I see we have, tonight, we have basically three decisions that we can make, and it's entirely up to what the council wants to do. A, we can say, we're just going to make the decision tomorrow based upon, on the dais discussing everybody's resume, and then make a decision, which will be made then at the full council meeting by nominations. That's one. The second one is, we can say, discuss, how do we cut this down to a reasonable number of, of candidates to interview, just based upon the, on the number, on their applications? Or you got a third one, and that's to interview everybody. But I understand it has to be all at the same time, it has to be in public. So it's not like you can say, okay, we're going to have one candidate, everybody else in the other room, and they interview the one candidate, and then keep going. And the policy calls for a half hour interview per person, unless the, I as a council president can shorten that. But realistically, with 18 people, you'd be looking, once for the time we start to the time we end, nine hours.
It's a long evening.
That'd be a long, that'd be a long evening or a long day. So I think there's, the logistics of it, there's, we will have to make some changes. So, and my guess is that we're going to come down, and I'm just guessing, we're going to come down in the middle somewheres of this, and then, I guess the procedures for discussing them, each candidate is open to also discussion. So with that kind of a process, I'm open to what people want to do.
Question. How many candidates did we interview at the last council appointment?
I think it was nine.
I'm sorry, it was 12.
12?
Thirteen applied.
Yeah.
Okay, so, so we've got about 30% more this time around than we did the last time. Does anybody have a recollection of how much time we invested in that process?
Well, it took about a half hour per person.
I'll go grab a minute.
Yeah, just not, not per person, but just total time?
It seemed like, I don't know, three or three, three hours, maybe would be my guess. Maybe three and a half or something.
Three and a half, of course.
It was a long night. That's kind of what I remember.
The...
So what was the first choice again?
Well, the first, the first choice is, we could just do it by us having an open review of the, of the applications with no interview. And as I see, the second one is, is to figure out a process by reviewing the applications to reduce the number. And the last one is to do them all. Because if you look at the policy, uh... Each candidate's interview shall not exceed 30 minutes in length, and consists of three steps. A formal presentation of credentials by the candidate, and we gave everybody five minutes for that, up to five minutes. Set of pre-selected questions approved by the council that candidate must respond to, and each candidate must respond to the same set of questions. And then after that, an informal question slash answer period in which council members may ask miscellaneous questions. Candidate's order of appearance at the interview should be predetermined by the council. The chair may limit the length of each candidate's interview if the number of candidates exceeds six. Upon completion of all interviews, council members may discuss the qualifications of the, of the candidates. Then...
I got it.
No decision would be made then. But after the completion of the interviews and discussion during committee, the whole, the chair at the meeting, the following regular council meeting will ask for nominations. Nomination will be made beginning with the council president in an order of roll call for the month. Balloting is done by roll call as outlined in 6.3.1. No secret ballot is permitted. Validity will continue until a nominee receives a majority of four votes. At any time during the voting process, council may postpone balloting until the next regularly scheduled council meeting if a majority vote is not reached. All interviews, discussions, nominations, and votes taken by the council shall be held during regular session. The nominee receiving the majority vote is declared a new council member and shall be sworn in by the city clerk or other designated official to next regularly scheduled council Then this is the clinker in all this.
Yeah.
If the council does not elect a new council member within 90 days of the acknowledged vacancy, an impasse will be declared. The council president will submit a request to King County Council that it appoint a qualified person to fill the vacancy. The names of the nominees reconsidered by the council will be sent to the King County with the request. That does not mean that the county would have to take that list of nominees, they could take anybody they wanted to.
Council president?
Yes.
I would like to just start off by just eliminating option one. That would be my recommendation, that we don't consider making an appointment as a council body. And the reason that I would say that is, first and foremost, I'm thrilled that we've got 18 excited candidates who want to join this body to serve their residents. I think that's fantastic. And that being said, I think that it's important that we come up with a process that really values that in a way that we make it as transparent as possible, meaning that we do the interviews openly, and that we give everybody a fair opportunity. And so I would, I would hesitate to lean towards the direction of not interviewing all candidates. I think that everyone who's putting their hat in the ring here deserves some consideration, and I'm willing to put the extra time in if it takes that, and if we've got to do it over the course of more than a day, I'm willing to do that.
Well, I, I don't disagree with, with you on, and I walked in here kind of figuring that we're going to interview, do some interviews. The problem, as I see it, is once we start interviewing it, you got to go all the way because you can't, you can't then turn around, you know, it's, you just can't stop the interview process and say, okay, now you have a week or two, or a day or two to, to go and talk to somebody or do whatever. I think you, you need to blast through, I mean, just persevere. So that is, that's where I'm going to...
If I'm hearing you, then you're saying just do it all in a day?
Well, I think you don't have any choice.
Okay, then I'm, that's fine with me. I'm open for that.
And I, and I, I guess, I would give a counter suggestion, I mean, which in, would be interviews, I would say, and this will drag the process out for a week or so, till we can get it, we'd have to have a special council meeting to accomplish it. But the other suggestion that I like to put out is that we can discuss these, tomorrow, we can discuss all these, because any discussion on the candidates has to be here. At the end of that time, then each council member could nominate a candidate to be interviewed, but you couldn't, if once, once that person is interviewed, nominated, then they can't be renominated. So you'd, you'd end up with six different, six different candidates. That's...
So for clarification, and help me understand your proposal, are you suggesting that we, as a council body, make recommendations to nominations upon reviewing the candidates and determine that those to be the candidates who are interviewed by vote?
Yeah. Well, there wouldn't be a vote. Each candidate, each council member would nominate somebody that they felt was a good candidate to be interviewed. There wouldn't be a vote. That's would be, and then we would move on. So you'd end up with six candidates, six, because you couldn't interview, I mean, say, two people or three council member couldn't nominate the same person. That would defeat the process. I'm open to suggestions, but it just, having gone through the process twice...
Council president? I appreciate your creativity in suggesting that, but I, I lean more towards thinking about, these 18 candidates represent various parts of our community, which means that there are people who support them, the people that are probably would like to see any one of them join this council. And to have individual council members make a recommendation of a candidate systematically eliminates 12 individuals, which means that they don't even get a chance to, to tell us what they think about serving as a council member. So I would, I would, I would, I wouldn't be inclined to want to go that route because it, it takes people off the table. The other thing too, that I think about, is that I think that we should view, looking at selecting a candidate for this position, not just from the lens of the preferences of this body, but from what our community would expect and want to see in a public servant. And so that means that we've got to create a process that is going to be open, transparent, visible, that we can hear all of the various, and not only that we get to hear, but the people at home get to hear it as well, so that they can understand how and why we made the choices that we did in the end.
Well, Mr. Taylor, first of all, you keep talking about transparency, and I don't think I've ever seen a process that is more transparent than this, but we're having these discussions in the council chambers and on, and on TV, and that's the whole goal. It is a common business practice for people to submit resumes, and for people to review them and select people to be interviewed. And I think this council is fully capable of accomplishing that in a fair, in a fair manner. These, I've looked at, at all of them, they all look like good candidates. No matter how we do it, it's going to be a difficult decision of, of who we finally come up with. And it's our job, and we do a lot of work in committees, and we make decisions that we think are in the best interest of the citizens of Britain. And, and this is the same thing. And it, some of it just has to be on faith that we're doing our job, that's what we got elected to do. And so that, and there, if you look at these, a lot of people have had input in recommendations, so I'd like to hear what other council people have to say.
Mr. Person? Yeah, all good considerations, and I guess we're really fortunate that so many people have applied this time. And I've seen both, I've seen another format used all the way back, more than 20 years ago, when John Reed passed away untimely. And we, we did, we did do, the interviews were done differently. Actually, I had the distinction of having applied for one of the positions.
He was there.
I think that time there were like 13. I, I want to say there were a lot. And the, the way that we did it, the way that it was done that time, the, the council provided like five minutes for each, each candidate. There was a night when all the candidates came, a special meeting, and they all sat in the chambers. And then the council provided each one five minutes with an opportunity for the council to ask questions right then and there, as opposed to the format that was more like candidate format that we used the previous two times where we set up a big table and everybody sat, and we went up and down, asking the same question. And, and I think maybe in some ways, the, the first format was better because the questions could be directed, you know, if somebody comes up and they say they have a master's in business administration, you could do a follow-up question about what they perceive to be, you know, the biggest budget issue the city's facing, or something like that. You could really tailor the question for the way they just, you know, gave their, their introduction versus that sort of generic questions that we asked all the panelists the, in the, in the way we did it the last two times. But the other thing is, it did seem like we made our way, I say we, but it was really the, everybody that was there, me included, but the council made its way through the applicants faster. And I think that, that, you know, that, one could perceive, when, when, when I was in the, I was an applicant at the time, and I, I kind of, I ended up being kind of a finalist. I didn't get appointed, but we could see when we were sitting in the, you know, gallery, who was going to be considered by the council, you could kind of tell by the questions. And the council was able to call people back and ask them a follow-up question, but it was, it was an okay process, you know, it was kind of you, everybody was aware of how everybody else was doing in the interviews. But, but I guess, I guess I would say, I would choose that format ahead of having everybody at a table. And, and that would, let's see, if we gave everybody five minutes, so it would be like about an hour and a half minimum. And then depending on the questions, I imagine some candidates that, if individual council members are very, giving very serious consideration to certain candidates, they might ask them more questions. But, you know, maybe another hour and a half for those. That's one idea anyways.
But this says a set of pre-selected questions approved by the council that the candidate must respond to. Each candidate must respond to the same set of questions. That's in the policy. Page three at the bottom.
Yeah, and that's, that's what, I like, Mr. Corbin, I like your, your format, because I really don't like the other format, because I, I watched it, and I thought it just, it treated some people very unfairly.
Yeah.
I like your format, so that's why we have the city attorney here tonight. Can, can we modify as a council? Can we modify the format?
It's the council's policy that's been adopted. The council can suspend item 6.2.1B if it wishes, and, and follow the procedure that's been established by Mr., suggested by Mr. Corbin.
I, thank you for pointing that out. I guess we could check on the history. I think we, I think we revised this, you know, two, two times ago, basically. I think we, I, my memory is, we did revise this and said, here's how we want to do it, and we sort of put it in the policy, but, but I might be mistaken about that.
I think you're right, and I think the...
Ironically, Terry signed.
Yeah. Oh, Terry signed it. Yeah, that is interesting.
I think what happened, Mr. Corbin, is that when we got into that position, there was no written history of what, what had done before.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
So it, this, there was a, a suggestion of this was a format to use, because somebody else had used it, and the council went with it, and then we, we memorialized it by putting it on paper. But like Larry says, we, it's our policy, so we can change it. And, but I'd like to hear the other people, Mondo and Ed, and maybe, maybe we can even take Randy's idea and, and shake it around a little bit, and, and come up with a couple of other suggestions to it. And that's assuming that that's what everybody else wants to do.
Well, Mr. Chair, I actually am inclined to agree with Randy's idea. I think that having just ran for office and sitting through certain question periods where you're sitting four or five abreast, and, you know, whoever has to answer the question first, by the time it gets to the last question, it's, you're, you're able to formulate your idea and your thoughts much better. So, not that that won't happen in this format to a certain degree, but I do like the, the five minutes and allowing them to get up and, and basically do the same thing they're going to do in writing here. At some point, we're going to have to narrow it down. I don't know if we do it all at once or not, but I would prefer doing it, giving each council member a short period of time, and then a, with questions pre-established.
If I could provide you with a data point, I'm not part of this debate, but the last time we interviewed, the council interviewed candidates, there was 10 people that actually sat and answered questions. It took two hours and 45 minutes. If you break that down, if my math is correct, that that's about 16 minutes a candidate. If you multiply that out by 18 candidates, you're going to be up to 288 minutes, which is four and a half, four and three quarters hours. So that just, that tells you how it worked last time now, if you took the full 30 minutes for each candidate. The, the rules allow you to, to knock the number of minutes each person gets down, but then I think you have to limit the number of questions you're going to ask, or it's not going to work, and then you have the question again, as, as been expressed. And it was a little awkward last time, going down, and, and number one gets question one, number two gets question two, or you have, you have some sort of a rotation that's been picked out. By the end, people were able to make some pretty good notes and answer some questions pretty well. So it's been, it's happened, this is the fifth time I've been through this process. So the first time, it was just a five minutes for your credentials and any, and a couple of minutes for questions from the council, and then it got a little more formal each time. I don't, I don't recall ever having 18 people that expressed interest.
Well, and part of it, I'm not, I'm not against having a process where we reduce the number, I just like the format better than the, the committee and asking. I like the format of having each candidate get up and, and have a period of time. So I think, actually, kind of a blended scenario. You know, in terms of reducing the number of candidates down off of applications, that's the way it's done in the business world, you know? You get applications for, for a position, and you get 30, 40 positions, you're not going to interview all 30 or 40, you're going to, you're going to find the ones that best fit the position and interview those, so.
Mr. President?
Yeah, Ed?
So I agree with Armando, and just for reference, when Kent did their appointment earlier this year, they had 38 applicants. They went through a process where they had to narrow folks down so they could find the right people that they felt worked for being on council. So I have no problem if we decide that we want to modify or reduce, or whatever, whatever we as a body decide to do. But I, the, I was here in the audience tonight that you guys did the cattle call, I'll call it. And, and that sounds better than Doggy Pony Show. And I really like the format Randy's talking about a lot better. It seems more respectful of all the individual candidates. It makes it seem less like a circus.
Yeah.
It gives everyone their time to shine, and allows us to get more than you can get from, oh, I've got a couple minutes, may pass this person the microphone.
Right.
You know, it seems like we can dive a little deeper.
Mr. Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
And I, I, I'm not opposed to a process that creates opportunity for all the candidates to be heard. And as we just learned, that was going to be a question to, to our attorney, I was curious in terms of how much time we allowed each candidate to have during the last process. And so if we're going to allow 18 people to be interviewed, I don't have, I'm not opposed to reducing the time. 30 minutes is, we don't have to do that. If we're going to reduce the time though, I want us to interview all of the candidates. And then the other thing too, that I just want to comment about, when I, when I, when we refer to doing this like businesses, and we, you know, make that comparison, this is not a business. This is public, a public agency, okay? And, and people did not put in an application to have some administrator hire them. They were elected by voters, residents of the city. And so I like to maintain, you know, a perspective of how we make a candidate selection that doesn't consume all of my efforts of viewing it in terms of what I would look for, and also making a comparison of a business lens and, and, and agency with that. So I think that we should think in terms of, you know, creating an opportunity for all the candidates. I'm not opposed to reducing the time. And if we reduce the time the way that Larry just mentioned, you know, we can get it under five hours, and that would allow plenty of time for the candidates. In addition to that, I think that five minutes doesn't really allow a candidate to effectively elucidate all of the things that they might want to share with us. And so I'm not opposed to, you know, using a format that we can ask different questions and allow these candidates to take us where they think their, their best strengths and so forth, you know, are situated. But I, I just want us to think about making sure that we make room for all of them.
I think the first, and what I'm hearing, is that the format that Randy has suggested is, is the way that the council wants to do it. That's, that to me is the first question that we answer, and I...
Can I just clarify?
Sure.
That each of the 18...
Well, we're not talking about the number, we're just talking about the...
Each of the people that want to participate.
Yeah.
Because like, we've... Because like we found out, not all of them did participate at that level the last time. Some people put their application in and just-
Didn't show.
So, to clarify, those that want to participate would come up to the podium, and they'd have a maximum of five minutes?
Well, we can discuss that.
Okay, or whatever. And then council would be able to ask questions immediately thereafter. And then my question is, do we have a timeframe? Or can we go on for 15 minutes with one candidate? And then what happens after that?
Well, I think, well, I think, first of all, in fairness to, no matter how many candidates we interview, in fairness to all of them, everybody has to be cut off. I mean, I-
Five minutes or what?
I mean, whether, well, on these, on the backup questions. Because if somebody-
Yes.
I could, I could maybe like somebody or dislike somebody, and I, so I'm going to keep that person up there until they finally say something wrong or until they finally say something right. Well, that's not fair. So, we would have to have a predetermined time-
Yeah.
-that each candidate could be, be interviewed. So, if you-
Yeah.
Uh, so if you did say you got five minutes to present yourself, I mean, that makes, you better be pretty much on the ball to do that. And that, that's a pretty, for some people, that's a real short time. People, other people, that is not enough time. So, I, I would propose, and I'm trying to do this as you can see in increments, so that we can get agreement. So, my, I would suggest that we do, no matter how many candidates, we haven't, we're not talking about how many yet, that we do 15 minute from the time they start talking until the time the last question is asked. But there again, you can get somebody to get along with it, so, but they get to 15 minutes, we would, they have five minutes, then we have 10 minutes to ask questions, and they have that, you know, to, to answer. If we do that-
I'm okay with that. I would, I would just say that what we would want to do, what we would build into that is to make sure that they understand that they have the flexibility that when they approach the podium to give their statement, that if they give a five-minute statement, they've got 10 minutes of questioning time left. And if we consume five minutes of that, that questioning, and no one has further questions, they get to use the other five minutes to, 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 you know, comment and use all of their time.
I don't know if that's fair, because what if someone does use all of their time, and then we use all 10 minutes? Then we've given an advantage to someone who's had an extra five minutes to present themselves more. I don't, I don't-
No, I'm saying, I'm saying that they use all of their, they decide how they want all their time.
No, I understand what you're saying. You're saying they use all their time. If we don't use all our time, then they get that time.
They, they've got 15 minutes from the beginning of their presentation to the end of our questions. They get to determine how they want to use that time. If they want to do a seven-minute presentation and have an eight-minute, you know, left for questions, that's their call. But what, what I wouldn't want to see is if they did a seven-minute presentation and we did three minutes of questions, and then they leave the podium with five minutes left on the table. I think we'll-
So, what if they do a 15-minute speak, and then there's no time for questions? How's that going to work?
That's how they spend their time. They make that choice.
That doesn't work, because that gives us no time to ask them questions.
No, no, they, they understand that's a part of the ground rules. They know that when they approach the podium, that you've got an allowance of 15 minutes, which is going to include your questions. So, you can give, you tailor it. You go home, you practice it. You come to the podium, you give a, a five-minute presentation, you've got, and we've got a clock here, we've got a timekeeper, you've got 10 minutes for questions. And if we don't use all of their 10 minutes, then we inform them that you've got two more minutes. Is there anything else you'd like to add? And they get to do that. But they don't go over their 15 minutes, but they don't lose any of their time either. And they get to determine how they want to do that. Some people like to give short succinct presentations. Some people do have a tendency to, you know, be a little bit long-winded. And if that is the case, then that will, you know, impact that person, you know, in an adverse way. But that would be a choice and a decision that they made.
Might I suggest that one way to handle this issue is that the chair or the clerk, whoever you want to handle it, if someone was making a, a longer presentation, would warn them at 10 minutes that they only have 15 minutes total. And if they, if they still continuing to speak, then the council may not have an opportunity to-
There you go.
-ask questions.
Yes.
So, we have a clock. I, that's, that's one way that's, that it's handled. That I've seen before. I mean, that's how the Court of Appeals handles it.
Mr. Corbin? Well, I, I mean, maybe it's okay. Let's not forget, though, that there's, there's the 18 people here, too, for the five-plus hours. We're going to have breaks, and I, I'm not sure we're doing that many services either if we, if we force it to go longer than it needs to. So, I, I mean, part of me, I, I guess I kind of like the idea of, of five minutes with some, some follow-up questions and, you know, if we could, yeah, and a maximum time, which is really our limit on ourselves, which would mean we'll have to take really good notes, we'll have to think of very precise questions.
The problem with that is that if we get a candidate who does a five-minute presentation, we're going to have the period of time that we ask questions oscillating all over the place from candidate to candidate. And it shouldn't be that way. I mean, I know a little bit about advertising, and, you know, even, you know, in the political realm, there's a thing about fair time, equal time, when you start talking about TV appearances and those kinds of things. And these candidates are going to be seen and, and from our viewers at home. So, it would be unfair for one candidate to be at the podium for five minutes and have a, a series of questions that lasted longer than another candidate. That would give the impression that that candidate was more preferred by, or piqued the interest more from the, this body.
Well, first of all, Marcy.
Well, it's, it's just like what they've put in. Some people, it's quite a packet, and other people, it's one-page letter. I'd like to be considered. So, it was up to each of those people to decide how much information about themselves, just like when you want anything, how much you want to let people know. And some people can express themselves quickly. Randy's really good at thinking on his feet and expressing himself succinctly, and other people, they have to think, think a little bit more. I guess I prefer the five minutes maximum for them to talk and the 10-minute maximum for us to ask questions. Doesn't mean we'll do it on each one. Depends on their presentation and how much information they sent us in the first place.
But Marcy, I'm not saying that everybody is going to use all of their time. They just have the choice to do it if they want to.
I think we have to have a little bit more of a, a system in place, because I understand what you're saying, Greg, but that seems too mushy for me. There's no structure for me when you're saying, well, if we don't use all our time, then they get to have that time. I think we have 15 minutes, they get five minutes, we get 10 minutes. If we don't use all our 10 minutes, we don't use all our 10 minutes. I don't think that that will happen. This is a council seat in the City of Renton. I think we'll have, we, we're going to want to vet all of these people. And so, I think that we will be, and then it becomes incumbent upon us to do our work and have our questions and be prepared and ask all the questions. But that, that seems more structured to me than, well, if you don't use all the time, then you get five minutes, or you get two minutes, or you get one minute.
And then the other thing about this is, is there's going to be six people to ask So, I don't think we'll have any trouble filling the 10, that 10 minutes, because it takes the time to ask a question. And in fairness, you got to give every council member a chance to ask a question. I mean, if, if, if they have one. And if they don't, I'm sure there's council people who'll have two questions. So, what I'm seeing is a general consensus with Greg disagreeing with us, that we have a 15-minute limit for each candidate, and it's five minutes to make a presentation, 10 minutes to be, answer questions. At the end of 10 minutes, we're through. And they don't get a chance to come back up. I mean, so everybody's treated fairly.
And then what?
Well, then, that's it.
Okay.
And then, well, see, we, we can't, from there on, they've, they've made their interview. Then the, after all that, you've taken your notes, I've taken my notes, everybody has. Then on Monday, the 8th, we, then we would, then you would be in a position to nominate it, and-
We have discussion out here.
And we have the discussion out here. Why, you know, if you didn't nominate somebody, you'd say, I'm nominating this person because da, 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 da. And you would say, well, I'm nominating this person. And then as we start going around, you, and I think if I remember Randy, you guys had, what, 13 or 14 rounds at one time?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's usually-
Once at 1:00 AM?
Yeah, I can, it can, I think that, I think that the time that I was an applicant, and actually Jess Tanner, I think, was the one who finally was appointed that time. I think it was like 26 rounds of balloting.
And I, I think I had to sit in on that meeting as a sergeant-at-arms or whatever they called it.
Yeah.
And it went on and on. And actually, Jesse Tanner wasn't in, in the first round.
Yeah.
It changed. I mean, nothing means, so people saw, well, I'm not going to get, so, I like this person. And so, so the number, the people changed throughout until they finally came up with a candidate that they could get four votes.
Yeah.
So, it wasn't like the first six people that were nominated that stayed that way, because they would drop off and they would come back and, and I-
Council, so you don't get too scared about this, in 2000, there were two ballots, and in 2008, there were three ballots. So, we've had them long and we've had them short. It really is up to you and how you perceive the candidates and how you-
I see.
-vote. So, even though I know we have had the infamous 23, 26 rounds of balloting, the last two times has been less than five.
And, and I, I don't, you know, have no idea how it can go, and that's the nice part about this process. But we would, we would just at, at council meeting, we would go until we're done. And if, you know, if you get done in three or four, or one, or two, or 10 or 12, that's, that's the way it would be. So, so, so as I understand where we're at right now, and we've got a couple of other decisions to make, we're going to go with Randy's format, and we're going to go, each candidate has five minutes to make a presentation, and then the council has 10 minutes to ask questions. And, uh, so that's the process up to this point. Okay, then, now the next point is, is in fairness to the council and, and to the candidate, how do we want to do the questioning? That means if we always start with the, with the rotation, you may get down to Greg and, and Mondo and Ed don't get a chance to ask a question. So, my, my, my thought on that is, this is from a procedure, is that we would, we would start with a rotation and then move through so that everybody have an, and I, you know, if you don't, if you think they've answered your question that you have in their presentation or Randy asked the question that you were going to ask, I would suggest we're all smart enough to say, well, I don't have a question.
Yeah.
You know, I've got that answer. So, it's not like you have to answer, but I want to be sure that as we go through this, each council person gets a chance, opportunity to start the question.
Good.
Uh, Mr. President, in order for that to really be accomplished, we would have to be very conscious and aware of the amount of time, choice of words, and, you know, how we phrase our questions to make sure that we're not asking very long type questions or two or three questions within a question. We need to be very considerate in how we do that so that we can create more opportunity for other council members to ask questions as well.
And I agree with you wholeheartedly, and that's what I'm trying to do, Greg. So, if that's okay, that will be-
I think that's a good idea.
Yeah.
That'll be that process.
So, you'd start-
I would, I don't know whatever the rotation is. Is Jason here?
Yeah.
What's the rotation?
It's you, then Ms. Palmer, then-
Okay.
And then we would, then it'd be Ms. Palmer, then we just continue on around.
Like that.
Yeah, that works.
Okay, so that, we've got that much-
Yeah.
-decided.
That one off.
So, now, and I'm getting a sense that with this, that we definitely are not going to do, because we're going so much time on how we're going to do the process, that we're going to do interviews. Is everybody in agreement to that we're going to do interviews?
Yes.
Exactly.
Okay. Now, the only question remaining is, are we going to do all 18?
I would say yes.
And I, or do you want to reduce? I mean, you're, you're, we're looking, we're going to come in here at 5 o'clock.
So, we're doing this tomorrow?
Yes.
Yeah.
So, we're looking at, I know it's scheduled till 8, but we're talking five hours.
Oh, we'll be here to 10 o'clock or 10:30, because we're going to have to stop and take a break, me for sure.
I can't sit that long.
I can't sit that long.
I can't take a little break.
Uh, so, we're going to be here, we're-
Count on six hours.
Yeah, I mean, you're, you're going to be looking at at least six hours that, that we'll be here and, you know, we'll just trooper through and get it done if we're going to do all 18. And I don't care how many we, I mean, if, if, the decision of where the majority of the council is, I'm here, I am more than willing to go through all 18, and I'm looking for-
I'm fine, if that's what the majority of the council wants to do.
I'm looking for everybody else.
It'd be a long night. I'll bring some Mountain Dew.
I, yeah, and I, I think, I, I think if there were any more than 18, then, you know, we'd, we'd really have to consider reducing it. 18's probably about the maximum threshold.
Limit.
Yeah. Because otherwise, I think we start making it difficult for the candidates themselves to be here. A long meeting is going to be tough for them. But, um, but then, I, I think that maybe to, to make the evening manageable, there will have to be a recognition that, that, that some candidates were, were going to be delving deeper because the fact is they're more likely to, to be selected potentially. And, and I mean, I, I guess I do like the idea, since we, we have 18, if we, if we interview everybody, we can give them all at least five minutes, and if they dazzle us and amaze us, we'll, we'll, you know, we'll definitely be asking them a lot of questions. But I think that we're just going to have to really, you know, be rational about what, what we're asking to be aware of people's time. Because it's going to require that everybody that's, that's made themselves a candidate is here for the whole duration, I presume?
Well, I, I mean, that'd be their choice. They could, they would all, everybody has to be here at the start. And, and then what, this is the other suggestion that I'm going to have is-
Okay, that's true.
That we have some kind of a, they draw a line-
Draw a line, that's a good idea.
As to how they, how they're going to be interviewed.
That's true.
So, they could, they have two choices. If they're, they're number one up, they could do their, their thing-
And go home and watch it.
And go home and watch it on TV, or they can stay, which I would think they would want to stay to see the, you know, because things do change sometimes. You just never know what's going to happen, even the best-laid plans.
Uh-huh.
Or if I'm going to be number 10 or 18, I could say, I think I'll go get dinner, and then I'll come back in the, in appropriate time. And there's no, there'd be no requirement that they stay here.
Right.
That's, that's entirely up-
Up to them.
That's up to them. If they want to stay the whole time, they can, they can stay the whole time.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah.
Question for our city attorney. You mentioned that the last time around we did this, that we gave about 16 minutes per candidate, and that it, it, it went about four and a half hours or somewhere it's about?
Something in that order, yes.
Okay, and did that four and a half, is, is that the start in, in time of the meeting?
No, I-
Was that the start and the end time?
The, the last time around took two hours and 45 minutes with 10 candidates, so I was projecting that forward with 18 candidates.
Oh, okay. And the reason that I'm thinking, as I do the math, you know, I'm, I'm thinking we're doing 15 minutes instead of 16, so that shaves a little bit off. And if that time included breaks, okay, so, you know, we don't have to, you know, worry too much about that taking us too late into the night. And then the other thing is that, as I recall, there were seven, or no, there were six council members. So, yeah, we still had the six. So, there were six questions being posed from the council members. So, there is some efficiency that should occur from the, the way that we're doing it this time around, especially if we- Especially if we make sure that everybody on this council understands that we're going to really, you know, pose our questions in a very efficient manner.
So the math is, if you do breaks, figure fifteen minutes per candidate with the breaks, you probably get in three an hour if all eighteen show, which is probably something won't, that's gonna be six hours. So, just a factoid. Gotta use my engineering degree somehow.
Well, I guess everybody, I mean, that, they could even go more.
There's the thing.
So that's, I'm, I'm looking, or if we're ready to do it, we'll- Okay, then the other, next step is, is questions. And I, I pass out a set of, a set of questions.
We can ask anything.
But you can ask, under this format, you can ask anything. Basically, what the, if the candidate says something, then you can-
Uh-huh.
You can ask the question.
Or from their information.
Or from, or from the information, or anything. So, so there will be no predetermined questions.
Yeah, but, but this is good to have.
Well, this is good information to have.
The questions that we did and-
And, and I would say that, again, in fairness to the candidates, Julia, could we put this on, on our web, somewhere where they, where candidates could access? What, what we have in our hand is questions that we asked last time and then some suggested questions. But we're not gonna use, we-
This gives an example of the type of questions that may be asked.
Well, this gives an example of type of questions that were asked. And I wanna be sure that every candidate-
Has access to the same thing.
Has access to this. That does not mean that'll be the question that you will be asked. It's just, yeah.
They just know what we have in front of them.
You just know what we, what example of a questions that were asked before.
So I have a, a question, and that is, I'm aware that some candidates have hand-delivered their applications, some emailed them, as I've learned. Are we, are we going to ensure that every candidate gets a copy of these somehow? We're gonna contact those?
I think that's just what I said, Greg.
Yeah, you said post it on the internet.
Well, we're gonna post it and let them know that, I mean, we have to also let them know that-
They're being interviewed.
And you got Julia.
On Jason, City Clerk's-
And Jason.
Well, that's what I'm wanting to hear.
From having read through.
We can certainly make them available, it's up to the council, however you'd like us to do it. I would just suggest that if there is an interest in serving on the city council, I'm assuming people are tuning in tonight, and they're hearing that the questions are gonna be available through the City Clerk's office. If a candidate is not inclined to listen tonight or to follow up on questions, then they may not be the best candidate for the council. But that's obviously staff's opinion, and that's worth nothing.
Well, Mr. Covington, I, I differ there, because I'm thinking of a, a single parent who might be working right now, or someone who might, you know, have other responsibilities that have, you know, prevented them from being here tonight. So I'm thinking that, you know, rather than make the assumption that there's a lack of enthusiasm to be on this council, that we just do our part and make sure that they get the information.
Mr. Chair-
We'll do whatever the council wants.
From what I remember, and I, I went through all of these this afternoon, and I will go back with more detail. But from what I remember, there is an email for every single candidate.
Yeah, I think that was one of the requirements, right?
I'm looking right now, and it appears so.
Yeah, well, you probably didn't bother to read through, you had enough to do to get it to us.
So when they get the email of the, that they'll be interviewed tomorrow, they can be in emails, says, "If you want, they're online," or-
Or just attach.
Or attach it, or whatever, so-
Just need a copy of the questions.
You're, that's a good point, because we're gonna have to notify them. I mean, we're assuming they're paying attention, but to-
That's correct.
But Jason will handle that, right? You'll make sure that when we're done tonight, you notify each one of them what our decisions were?
Yes.
And then, is that right?
Yeah, that's correct, it's actually in the policy that I contacted.
I, I also agree with Jay. I mean, I've wanted jobs in my life, and part of, part of getting that job is keeping yourself posted. And if you don't know, calling or saying, "How can I check in?" So if somebody doesn't get the information, it, it's, we've, we're making it available. And this is more information than most cities give in any of this situation. And, and I think, Randy, it used to be when, when you had a, the, the old way of, before you did the twenty-three rounds, they used to interview the candidates or look at, and then they'd go into executive session to make their decision. And that, obviously, that's not what the law is. And I think the process is best held in the open, so people know where, where we're coming from on it. So, but they, but I always felt, I did a lot of job interviewing, and the candidate has a certain responsibility to get the information. We, I mean, we have a responsibility to make it available, but they have, they have a little bit of-
I have a phone number.
Responsibility to be sure that they're getting the information too.
That's true.
Okay, so what I'm getting is, we're going to interview all eighteen of them tomorrow. We'll start at five.
When they get here, they'll pick lots?
And then when they get here, see, there, there again, there, there's fifteen minutes right there to pick lots and get ready to go.
Couldn't that be, couldn't be done ahead of time?
Well, Jason, can you tell them they need to be here at four forty-five?
I can tell, yes, yes, sir.
And that the interviews will start at five?
Okay.
And then, in that four forty-five, I guess my attitude is, if you're not here at four forty-five to pick a lot, you're, you're, you're late. And you're, you're, you know-
Yeah.
You're last.
And, and you're last. Well, but there's a certain advantage, there could be a certain advantage to that, too.
I won't tell them.
So, but, I mean, part of being here, part of becoming a candidate for anything is being here on time. I mean, that was, that's the first test I gave every employee, were they here on time? I always was, and maybe I shouldn't be judging by what I would do, but I was over there thirty minutes early, just to be sure that, whatever. Anyway, so that's what we'll do.
Um, you know, I am gonna be on crunch, and I may, I'll do my best to be here by quarter to, but don't-
We will wait for you. We will not do an interview without you sitting in this chair.
Okay, no, that's fine, I just may not be here at four forty-five for that.
I think they need to be here, we don't have to.
The council does not need to be present at four forty-five. Most likely better, most likely better if we're not out here at four forty-five, because I think the worst thing you could do, any of us could do, is be here at four forty-five and be out in the audience talking to any of the candidates. Just, I mean, that's-
So I've got a question.
Okay.
So is there any chance at four forty-five, we maybe should ask the clerk tomorrow to get confirmation of who, who intends to be here?
Oh, that's a good idea, yeah.
And then maybe have the, the clerk, you know, draw the lots at, at four forty-five for everybody that says they intend to be here. This is just a suggestion, so that if somebody does arrive fifteen minutes late, or twenty minutes late, or whatever, that it, it might be immaterial. If, I, I guess what I'm trying to figure out is, what, what will we do if somebody shows up and they've raced all the way back from a job in Seattle, and they're here ten minutes late? I just wanna have it clear, we could either have, somebody's drawn for them and they say, "Okay, you're on approximately, you know, well, you're on sixth," you know? Or we could just have them excluded. But it might, might just make sense to tell them where they are in the order, him or her, where they are in the order. I don't know, what do you think?
Well, I guess, my, you know, my, you're talking to the guy that's always on time for these things.
Yeah.
And even leaving enough time, is if you can't make, that's the first test, is to be here at four forty-five.
Yeah.
And so if you're not here for the drawing, you're not drawn, but that's, that is a, that is a hard-nosed position, and I don't know that this council wants to take that.
I, I would, I would, I would prefer we don't, a purpose of punitive approach to that. Variety of things can happen to people. And everybody doesn't wear the badge of "I'm on time all the time." And that's a good thing and a worthy thing to be able to say and accomplish, and accomplish. But like I said, we've got a very diverse body of people that live in our communities, and everybody travels through different circles and, and events. And, and, and we ultimately will make observations, you know, and, and we'll listen. That could be a question, perhaps, if someone showed up thirty minutes late. I know, maybe that person might wanna share something about that, we don't know. So I would, I would say that, for me, I would, I would be very reluctant to wanna have a punitive approach towards someone who shows up a little late.
Yeah, I would offer a compromise to that, 'cause I could just say, "Well, I'll just be thirty minutes late, then I'm the last one, and I can listen to what everybody else has to say." So what I would say, that if, at four forty-five, we draw the names of the people that have told Jason they're gonna be here. If they tell Jason they're not gonna be here, then, then we won't consider them at all. But if they say they're gonna be here, we'll draw their names. If they happen to be number one-
Yeah.
And they're not here-
Yes.
Then we start with number two.
And, and they miss.
And they miss. Or-
Do they miss, or do they go to the end of the line?
Or we can make a decision, I mean-
I, I guess, I guess my, my instinct would be, if, if they missed by a little, we could put them in, in, in as early in the lineup as possible. 'Cause I, I guess I see the, the drawing of the order being, being important that it's random, in case there's advantage for the, the first candidate or the last.
Right.
And, and I don't wanna have, you know, some, some awkwardness where somebody, you know, stopped to, 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 to take a child out of the street or something, cause us to end up in a big debate about whether we let them go ahead and take that last position. But it almost seems like if, if, if they had the first position and they had the misfortune of not being here, we say, "Well, you had the first lot, you weren't here, so we're putting you second." But, you know, after that, it's, everybody, then, then the expectation is, people are here for their position, and if they're not, then, then they've missed their opportunity. How does that sound?
I agree with that.
Mr. President, I hate to throw a little bit of a wrench in the works, but it looks like Mr. Renneke and Mr. Wiesen do not have either telephone numbers or email addresses, so-
I did, excuse me, I did get Mr. Wiesen's number.
Oh, good, so we have a telephone number for Mr. Wiesen, but as far as we know, we don't have any telephone or email for Mr. Renneke.
Renneke.
The council did announce last week that there would be this discussion tonight and then interviews tomorrow night, beginning at five. So the candidate may already know that he needs to be here, or he may be listening in tonight and is aware. But we have no way of contacting him unless he contacts us.
Correct. This seems, this seems sound, then.
Well, I mean, you-
You draw an early lot and you get lucky, you don't necessarily have to stay till eleven PM.
Right.
But if you draw a late lot, it's, it's, it's possible that you'll have, you likely would have a chance to hear other people's answers and think of your own responses. So it's advantages for either or.
Either or, so, I, but what you're saying, Randy, if I, I wanna be, be sure that, so we'll draw the lots at five forty-five. Four forty, excuse me, we draw the lots at four forty-five. We draw all the people who say they, they're going to be here. If they say they're not gonna be here, obviously, they can't change their mind and show up later. And if they, if you draw the first, I, I would even give them the first two.
Yeah.
If the first two happen to be late, we would fit them in, and then they, that, because obviously, then the good question is, that I'm sure that's-
Why, why were you late?
Why were you late? And they would have to give an explanation. But after thirty minutes, I think that would be-
They've been told to be here at five already, so if-
Keep telling.
Actually, they'd be forty-five minutes late, 'cause they should be here at four forty-five.
Yeah, that sounds like a plan.
Is that okay with everybody?
Yeah, and then, could I make a request that we have the order of which they were picked in front of us?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, what we have now looks very random, I don't know if it was-
It's my last name. Alphabetic by last, by first name.
Alphabetical by first name.
Oh, by first name, I could tell it certainly wasn't, oh, okay. But that would just be helpful, as we got going, and not having to be shuffling, looking for that person's packet.
So I just wanna reiterate the process.
Okay.
I know, I got fifteen.
Am I overkillin' this?
It was very thorough.
They're all plumping like flies.
Right now, only two of them are gonna decide.
Only two are gonna show up tomorrow. Okay, the process is that the candidate will get five minutes to present themselves, then there's ten minutes. I've, but the, the council has ten minutes to ask questions. There'll be a timer, and when the red light goes off, I will stop the proceedings right there. You know, maybe give them five words to finish if, if necessary, but there won't be that I, you start and they can go on for three minutes. So that at, at the end of fifteen, they're done, the next candidate, you know they're on deck, they come up, and, yeah.
Yes.
And, and then at four forty-five, well, I'll stay with the, the process. And then we'll start, I'll start questioning, and then we keep going around. Hopefully, we get to everybody. If we don't, Marcy starts next, and then Grandy, and then Greg, and then around, so that everybody, every councilmember gets a chance to ask-
First and last.
To be first and last, and-
Mr. President?
Yes.
Got one other thing, too, that I thought, that this might help, you, you know, whoever is speaking at the podium, whoever the next candidate is, is, it's good for them to know their position too, so that they're on deck, they're close by, they're not sitting way in the back there, you know, 'cause that happening a number of times can consume some time, so, you know, they're, you know, you know-
Good point.
I think, I think we can, I think we can say-
We can put a list up.
Mark Martinez, followed by Marvin Rosetti, you know? I think we can, so that they know that they're-
They know that they're up on deck and they'll be here, we're not-
And that they're close, we don't need to do-
Any.
Yeah.
Okay, so we go through all that.
We have maybe one final procedural item, just for the council to think about. The last thing would be, it says, "Upon completion of all interviews, councilmembers may discuss the qualifications of the candidates." And the next policy says that should be during, that discussion should be during the committee of the whole. Now, you, again, this is your policy, and you could suspend that if it got too late and have that discussion at the next council meeting before the actual nominations and, and balloting took place. But if you did, be so lucky as to have some time left and some energy left at the end of the interviews, you could have a discussion, if you wish, about the, the candidates at the committee of the whole meeting. So I think you probably have to play that one by ear.
I think we play that one by ear, 'cause I, and, and the other thing is, we can have that discussion as they're nominated.
Yes.
There would be the opportunity to discuss the candidate that you nominate. And so after that, there won't be a decision made, 'cause we can't, it'll be at the next council meeting, and-
Yeah, so I think we're, we're, we're deciding that we, we won't have a discussion of the candidate.
Yeah, I don't think so.
I, I, yeah, I think, I think the, we could, we could allow ourselves to do it either way, but I think that if we decide now we're not gonna do that, that allows people that have interviewed to go home if they want, and I feel like they don't-
Yeah, that's a good idea.
I think by that time, our brains are gonna be-
Absolutely.
So full-
Yeah.
That, I know for me, I'm gonna wanna process it and go back and look at my notes and think through-
Yeah.
Um, the information. And if it's really eleven o'clock. Yeah, so I, I-
And then, and then there will be the random drawing at four forty-five, and we'll give, if somebody, if the first two aren't here, candidates aren't here, we'll move on to the next. But after that thirty minute, there, they, we won't, we won't talk to them, because they should be, to me, that's, that's just, they should be on time. So, and we're strictly to the fifteen minutes, councilmember can ask any, I mean, I wanna be real careful when I say, any question, you know?
Yeah.
Anything pertaining to this-
Your main.
Yeah.
That's deranged to the issue.
Yeah, and, and Don? Yeah, I guess I'd also like to suggest that, that when these questions do get sent out, that it just be super clear that, that these are just example questions that have been used in the past, that- used in the past, that we, I don't want anybody to prepare long-winded written answers or something for all of these. They just, they're an example, and, so they should just understand that.
Okay.
Okay, I think we are, got a process. I think it's, I think, I thank you, Randy, very much...
Oh, sure.
For that suggestion. I think you've made it a lot better process than we've had in the past, and I feel far more comfortable with it. Few compromises in the process, which, that's the way this particular council works.
And Don? Do we need to, we should maybe ask the attorney, do we need to change this policy, like, tonight at the council meeting, or...
Mr. Corbin, I think the council just did change it. If you wish to have us retain this in a written format afterwards, we should come up with a written format that mirrors what the council's done tonight, but you've just changed it by acclamation.
Okay, that's good enough. I think that's fine. Okay, perfect.